I'm going to call the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order on Tuesday, March 22, 2022, at 7:30 p.m. in the Old Manic Chamber and via Zoom teleconference, which meeting link can be found on the agenda and on the city's website calendar. Prayer will be offered by City Clerk Susan Lovering, and Alderman Alex Camo will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with a spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face out multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
Our congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. If you are participating via Zoom, please state your presence, reason for not attending the meeting in person, and whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderman Sullivan.
Present.
Alderman Cleese. Alderman Moran.
Present.
Alderman Lopez. Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderman Clemmons.
Here.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Here.
Alderman Camo.
Present.
Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderman Goveya.
Here.
Alderman Cathy.
Present.
Alderman Tebow.
Here.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Here.
Alderman Wiltshire.
I'm here.
You have 13 in attendance.
Thank you. Alderman Cleese did notify me that she was not feeling well, was unable to join us this evening. Also joining us this evening is Mayor Jim Donches and Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton. Mayor, did you wish to address the board this evening?
Yes, I do, Madam President. Thank you very much. I wanted to update you on a few new companies that have opened in Nashua, extremely good for our economy and economic development. The largest of these is KJ Can. Now, this is a company from Malaysia, who, the biggest can-making company in Southeast Asia. They have actually obtained a lease to renovate our former building on Burke Street, the one we bought for the purposes of the Public Works Garage, at least, and to get some land for the sewage treatment plant. So they are going to invest $120 million there, 120-plus, to make aluminum cans. It is a perfect fit for them because the building formerly Ingersoll Rand is 800 feet long, straight, and they're going to run two can lines there, employing 200 people. They may add some other stuff as they go along. They will make 2.4 billion cans a year. And the purpose of the move, and the gentleman from Malaysia was here, his name is Mark Yo, as well as somebody from Pasadena who's overseeing the U.S. operation, is that the cost of shipping this material, these cans, is so expensive now, if they were made out of the country, out of the U.S., that it is cheaper and better to make the cans here. So they're opening this can factory. It doesn't, they don't include any contents, they just make the cans. They're sure they can sell them with no problem, the market in the U.S. is huge, and they will be, they believe they will have the first line running by July. So I want to thank the state, they helped us, they helped attract this opportunity, Taylor Caswell and his staff, Tim Cummings, who worked with them, our building people who are helping permit the plant. This is a really good ending, Madam President, to the long odyssey of that building, which we had hoped might suit Public Works purposes, but really in the end, because of the peers, was not ideal. Trucks couldn't really move around inside the building. But for the canning operation, or the can-making operation, the can manufacturing operation, it is a perfect building because the peers just go right along the parallel to the line. And so they're not an obstacle for this company, KJ Can, at all. So that was good news. Secondly, Rambling House, Tail Spinner, I heard Alderman Clemmons talking about it before the meeting. They opened with a brewery and a restaurant on Factory Street. The brewery comes in behind off water. It is, I went there with my wife, it is very good. It is our fifth downtown brewery and one of the plus-two on Amer Street. One of the other brewers from another brewery said, you know, that's really good news because if we can get a good enough concentration, people might come here to go from brewery to brewery. Maybe we should do that, too. So that is, I want to congratulate the Gleason family on that venture. And then, another one which is a different business, this I visited in the last week or so. This is a business called Stargate Ventures, formed by five Nashua high graduates. I don't know, they're around the age of Alderman Goveya, they're around 24. Maybe you knew some of them, but Rob Levine is the head of it, there's Colleen, there's Ari, there is Oxy, there's Orson, who's a little older. But they're located on Quincy Street, and their expertise is in cryptocurrency. And if you talk with them, and the metaverse, they know like everything, everything about cryptocurrency, a lot about the international financial system. This is exactly what we want to see in Nashua. These are, you know, Nashua kids who grew up, young people starting their own business, and they are incredibly enthusiastic, and I'm sure that, you know, they will go through evolution, the company will, but it's just a very inspiring group of young people here in Nashua. So those were three economic development things that I wanted to mention, Madam President. Also, the primary bank opened a branch, another community branch, that's a good thing, that was just this week, there was a ribbon cutting. I thought I would update you on COVID, very good news there. I mean, it's still present, the virus is still present, but as of Monday, only five people hospitalized. You remember that was up to in the '60s, not that long ago, five people in the two Nashville hospitals. Positivity rate is 3%. You remember that this year, earlier this year, it was 28, and the number of new cases per 100,000 in the last 14 days was 94. That was up near 3,000 earlier this year. So, good news there. And finally, and I think that's really, oh, one more thing, I wanted to mention the, in case you wanted to contribute, or any of our citizens, constituents want to contribute to the Ukraine, to Ukraine relief, all of the refugees, there is a fund that is, you can contribute to through Nashua Rotary West, and potentially through Nashua Rotary as well, but they are in contact with a Rotary Club in Poland, and they will give 100%. There's no administrative costs when these Rotary contributions get made. If you contribute to the Rotary Clubs, you can make sure your money will go to Poland, to a Rotary Club there, which will make sure that the money gets spent on refugee relief. Again, I know I did mention the Ukraine flag raising the other day, last time we met, but I'm not sure that I mentioned this opportunity to contribute, and if you'd like, or anybody would like, either contact the Rotary Clubs, or me, or anyone who works here. So that's all I have, Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor. Response to the remarks of the mayor. Anyone on this side? Seeing none? Recognition period.
There is none.
Reading minutes of previous meetings. There being no objection, I'll declare the minutes of the Board of Aldermen meeting of February 22, 2022, the accepted placed on file, and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
Communications have been received from Donna Graham, Legislative Affairs Manager, regarding communications received from the public, and from Garth J. McKinney, Interim Superintendent of Schools, regarding the Board of Education's unanimous approval of the Franklin Street School Improvement Project.
There being no objection, I will accept the communications and place them on file. Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. We have two speakers that have signed up. Kurt Mathias. Just give you an address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Yes, Kurt Mathias, Boston Billiard Club, 55 Northeastern Boulevard. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Congratulations on the cannery, that's awesome. It's great to see businesses coming to the town. I'm here to ask you to vote in favor of the 2:00 a.m. liquor license. As most of you know, we are working very, very hard to buy the Radisson Hotel, as long as we can get zoning passed, so that we can have a conditional use for charitable gaming. We think that that will help us in the long run compete with the casinos in Massachusetts, and offer alcoholic beverages to our customers for at least another hour during the late-night hours. So we ask that you please vote in favor of that, and if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them, so I don't bore you with a very long speech.
That's it? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Andrea Pierce.
Hi, good evening. I'm Andrea Pierce, 14 Curtis Drive in Nashua. I am also in favor, speaking in favor of the Boston Billiards or charitable organizations having their liquor license extended to 2:00 a.m. I am an executive officer in Massachusetts for 16 years in the entertainment and hospitality industry, so I've seen the fluctuation of different liquor license times and how it affects different businesses. Being a resident of Nashua my whole life, I've seen, you know, the liquor licenses and the entertainment industries come and go. I do ask that the board consider a recommendation, upon approval, if they do approve it, that it pertains to the customers that are currently in the establishment. So at 1:00 a.m., they can continue serving till 2:00, but no longer allow any other patrons to come into the establishment. Having businesses that have different liquor licenses in Massachusetts myself, we find that at 1:00 a.m., they get an influx of people that are already intoxicated, showing up on a licensed establishment, and it not only causes a lot of problems with the patrons, having to deal with a bunch of drunk people showing up at, you know, 1:15 in the morning when they're trying to end their night peacefully, it also puts a burden on the license holders to have intoxicated people now showing up at the door, having to turn them away, and it could cause more problems than if it's wanted. So my recommendation is, upon approval, having it restricted to patrons that are already on site, and not allowing any more patrons in after 1:00 a.m. Thank you.
Thank you. I have someone on Zoom, but write to something. I'm not sure, write to know. That's not a name, so in the future, if you could put your name, that would be more helpful.
Okay, I don't know if I can, because I don't even know why that appears. But anyway, it's Lori Ordolano, 41 Berkeley Street. I would like to speak to a couple things. The first one was the Franklin Street School, the bond for $5 million. I was there last night, I gave some comments on that. I would like to ask the board to do more to get information to the public on the bonding schedules, the cost of bonds, bonds that are coming off payment plans, so we have a better understanding on what's going on with the bond schedules, and we're able to educate board members more fully. We did that when I lived in Litchfield. I think it's really important, because I don't have a good sense of it, and I can't believe board members really have a good sense of it. And I also think it's really important to competitively build these things. We seem to give our contract to the same person or the same company over and over again because we have great results. And I just think that that's not a good plan, long-term. We should mix it up a little bit. A 15% contingency is very high. I know it's because of material fluctuations, but I think normal contingencies are like 3% or 4%. 14 Court Street, you've heard my comments on that. I'm concerned about extending a lease to liquid therapy, because I really think we should be getting rid of the building. If there is no fire issue in there to maintain the building, then we are just holding on to a facility that we will never make money in, and it costs us, you know, millions of dollars to maintain. So maybe we should sell that building to somebody who has a better plan, and can turn that into something more profitable. I support the gaming change in schedule to some extent, but in general, I sort of feel like nothing good happens with alcohol after midnight. The woman who just spoke and said that you should limit it to the patrons that are already on the establishment, I think had a really valid point. I'd also like to know what the Police Department position is on this, as far as what it may potentially do for police calls involving issues at these establishments, and if they raised the concern that was just raised by this woman who spoke previously. I'd also like to know that there's a monitoring program that we can see if there's any impact with our Police Department in extending this to 2:00 a.m. Raising the landfill fees, I think, is terrific. We need to do that. It is hard on the people dropping off stuff that are local people, but it's a necessary change. We have to preserve the landfill.
30 seconds.
Okay, that's everything. I'm good. Thank you.
That is the end of the first public comment period. Communications requiring final approval.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding a multi-year contract award recruiting website subscription.
Alderman Goveya.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to accept, place on file, and approve the three-year contract with Police App Recruitment Management System for the recruiting of sworn officers in an amount not to exceed $33,000. Funding through Department 150, Police Department Fund 55699. Other contracted services slash general.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding multi-year contract award Riverfront Landscaping.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. I motion to accept and place on file and approve the multi-year contract with Dotty Landscaping related to the Nashua Downtown Riverfront Implementation Project in an amount not to exceed $180,000. Funding through Department 183, Economic Development, Fund 54280. Building slash ground slash maintenance slash riverfront TIF fund motion. Oh, sorry, went too far.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Linda Laflame, Chairman of the Board of Library Trustees, regarding a request for joint convention.
There being no objection, I will accept the communication, place it on file, and schedule a joint convention with the Board of Library Trustees to Tuesday, April 12, 2022, at 7:30 p.m. in the Old Manic Chamber.
Communications have been received from Larry Goodrow, Chief Executive Officer of Penachuck, regarding Penachuck East Utility, Inc., request for approval of term loan with Co-Bank, ACB.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communication as read and refer it to the Penachuck Water Special Committee.
And communication from Larry D. Goodrow, Chief Executive Officer of Penachuck, has been received regarding the Penachuck East Utility, Inc., request for approval of loan and grant from the Drinking Water and Groundwater Trust Fund.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communication as read and refer it to the Penachuck Water Special Committee. Petitions.
Petition from Edstone Properties, Inc., for full waiver of impact fees for public school facilities as authorized under Section 19085 of the Land Use Code for Thompson's Preserve Condominium.
Alderman Jettie.
I move, we accept, place on file, and refer to the Planning and Economic Development Committee and the Nashua City Planning Board.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries.
Petition from Edstone Properties, Inc., for full waiver of impact fees for public school facilities as authorized under Section 19085 of the Land Use Code for the Alcove of Walden Woods Condominium.
Alderman Sullivan.
Um, I'm sorry, I'm not seeing that here. Place on file and refer to the planning and, that part?
Yes.
Refer to the Planning and Economic Development Committee and the Nashua City Planning Board. Motion carried. I don't know if you say that.
So you've heard the motion.
Actually, no.
Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Nominations, appointments, and elections.
Joint Convention with Trustees of Woodlawn Pinewood Cemeteries.
There being no objection, I'll declare that the Board of Aldermen meet in joint convention with trustees of the Woodlawn Pinewood Cemeteries for the purpose of re-electing two trustees, and call for nominations. Can I call for nominations? Trustee, there's only one trustee, I believe. Trustee Farwell?
Yes, Dana Farwell.
And Michael McLaughlin? Thank you. Okay. So in nomination, we have, for trustees, we have Dana Farwell and Michael McLaughlin, both for five-year terms to expire March 31, 2027. Would the clerk call the roll?
Trustee Uponovich. Trustee Bendinger. Trustee Bozelovich. Trustee Columby. Trustee Farwell.
Michael McLaughlin and Dana Farwell.
Trustee Frizzle. Trustee Jensen. Trustee McLaughlin. Trustee Whitmore. Trustee Whitney. Alderman O'Brien.
Michael McLaughlin and Dana Farwell.
Alderman Sullivan.
Michael McLaughlin and Dana Farwell.
Alderman Moran.
Michael McLaughlin and Dana Farwell.
Alderman Jettie.
Michael McLaughlin and Dana Farwell.
Alderman Clemmons.
Michael McLaughlin and Dana Farwell.
Alderwoman Kelly. Michael McLaughlin and Dana Farwell. Alderman Camo.
Michael McLaughlin and Dana Farwell.
Alderman Dowd.
Michael McLaughlin and Dana Farwell.
Alderman Goveya.
Michael McLaughlin and Dana Farwell.
Alderman Cathy.
Michael McLaughlin and Dana Farwell.
Alderman Tebow.
Michael McLaughlin and Dana Farwell.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Michael McLaughlin and Dana Farwell.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Michael McLaughlin and Dana Farwell.
Mayor Donches.
Mr. Farwell and Mr. McLaughlin.
You are 15 for trustee McLaughlin and 15 for trustee Farwell.
And that motion carries. I'll declare Michael McLaughlin and Dana Farwell duly appointed, reappointed to the trustees of Woodlawn Pinewood Cemeteries, both with terms to expire March 31, 2027. Mr. Farwell, if you would come forward to take the oath of office, please. And Mr. McLaughlin will take his oath at a later date.
Raise your right hand, please. You solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a trustee of the Woodlawn Pinewood Cemeteries, according to the best of your ability, agreeably to the rules and regulations of the City Charter and the Constitution and laws of the State of New Hampshire. So help you God. Congratulations.
Appointments, appointments, oh, there being no objection, I will declare that the joint convention now arise. Appointments by the mayor.
To the Honorable Board of Aldermen, I have this day appointed Steve Buxton of 70 East Hollis Street, Lauren Byers of 9 Riverside Street, Joseph Fay of 28 Officer James Roach Drive, and Gregory Rodriguez of 141 Led Street, all of Nashua, to the Cable Television Advisory Board for indefinite terms. To the Downtown Improvement Committee, Timothy Senet of 62 Underhill Street, Nashua, for a term to expire April 1, 2025. And to the Planning Board, Robert Wallinger of 5 Decatur Drive, Nashua, and Scott Leclerc of 10 Day Lily Drive, Nashua, terms to expire March 31, 2025, and respectfully request that these appointments be confirmed.
There being no objection, I will accept the appointments by the mayor as read and refer them to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee. Reports of committees, there being no objection, I'll declare the report of the February 17, 2022 Human Affairs Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the February 23, 2022 Committee on Infrastructure be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the February 28, 2022 Budget Review Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the March 2, 2022 Finance Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will suspend the rules to allow for the oral report of the Budget Review Committee meeting held last night regarding proposed Resolution 2216. Alderman Dowd?
Yes, last night, the Budget Committee met and unanimously approved the legislation R-2216, and for the $5 million bond for Franklin Street, and just a couple of things. One, we did at that meeting last night, agreed to have a meeting with the treasurer on the bonding plan, so that's already been set up, and the contingency fee that was mentioned is much higher than we have on the program, so, thank you.
Thank you. Confirmation of mayor's appointments?
None.
Unfinished business resolutions?
Second reading of Resolution R-2211, relative to the acceptance of $69,564 from the State of New Hampshire, Department of Transportation, into transit grant activity, Federal Transit Authority, FTA, operating grant.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. I motion for final passage of R-22 dash 011.
Motion is for final passage? Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries.
Second reading of Resolution R-2212, relative to the acceptance of $75,850 from the State of New Hampshire, Department of Environmental Services, Exotic Species Program, and authorizing the transvert matching funds.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Thank you. Move to for final passage of R-22 dash 012.
Motion is for final passage? Discussion on that motion? Seeing none? We got to get rid of those exotic species, so. Seeing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 2212 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R-2216, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed the amount of $5 million for Franklin Street School building improvements.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-22016 by roll call, which is required under Chapter, Charter, Section 49, and I'd like to speak to it briefly.
Alderman Dowd?
This money is for the Franklin Street School, for the different programs, including the preschool and the alternative middle school. This money, it was a presentation given last night by Mr. Smith as to the requirements, and this action has been, had received unanimous approval from the Joint Special Building Committee and the Board of Education and the Budget Committee.
Alderman Dowd, just for clarification, that's high school, not middle school, correct?
Right.
Okay. Thank you. You've heard the motion. Motion is for final passage of Resolution 2216 by roll call. Discussion on that motion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Camo.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Goveya.
Yes.
Alderman Cathy.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes.
You have 14 ayes and 0 nays.
That motion carries, Resolution 2216 is declared duly adopted. Now, for the record, Alderman Lopez joined us at 7:58 PM.
Thank you.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yeah, point of order, the, I have in front of me that R 2217 was removed from the agenda, but I think that was what you had thought I had asked for last night, that's the Liquid Therapy?
Yes.
Lease, so I'm wondering if we can continue with a final vote on that this evening?
Not if it's not on the agenda, we can't. Oh, it is on the agenda.
It was originally on the agenda, and for some reason... So I, I, I'll make a motion.
Alderman Clemmons?
If that's in order, I would move for final passage of R 2217, which is authorizing the mayor to enter into a Second Amendment to the 14 Court Street, sorry, 14 Court Street lease for Unit B with Liquid Therapy LLC. If I could speak to that.
Alderman Clemmons?
Thank you, so this was approved at the, for final pass, it was recommended for final passage at the Finance Committee last Wednesday. Basically, what it is, is it's, there's a small space that the Fire Department used to use in the 90s and before then, that had been literally abandoned by the city for some time. It took, I was approached by one of the owners of Liquid Therapy to see if that space might be available for them to use as a storage area, and so I brought that to the, to the city, to Kim Kleiner, and they worked on cleaning up the space as well as doing some fire suppression upgrades. And what this lease does is it basically allows them to move in there, the city will get rent from them as well as tax money. So it's, it's basically a win-win for the city, for the taxpayers, and for Liquid Therapy.
Okay, the clerk's telling me we need to have a second reading.
Sorry.
Second reading of Resolution R 2217, authorizing the mayor to enter into a Second Amendment to the 14 Court Street lease with Unit B with Liquid Therapy LLC.
Alderman Clemmons?
I move for final passage.
Motion is for final passage of Resolution 2217, discussion on that motion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and Resolution 2217 has been declared duly adopted. Unfinished business ordinances.
Second reading of ordinance O 22005, updating the financial standards for the city welfare guidelines.
Alderman Tebow?
Thank you, Madam President, I, I move for final passage of O dash 22 dash 005.
Motion is for final passage of ordinance 22005, discussion on that motion. I just want to say, I see Mr. Mack in the back of the room, does a wonderful job for us over at the Welfare Department, and as you all know, the, the rents and the housing in this city is just nonexistent, I mean, so I know that the rents are really high and that they do have to come in to us every now and then and, and upgrade the payment standards for that reason, so. Thank you, Mr. Mack. Motion is for final passage of ordinance 22 dash 5. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and ordinance 2205 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of ordinance O 22007, extending the hours of on-premises sales of alcoholic beverages to 2:00 AM for charitable gaming facilities.
Alderman Clemmons?
Thank you, I move for final passage of O 22007.
Motion is for final passage, discussion on that motion. Alderman Govea?
Thank you, Madam President, after consulting with Corporation Counsel, I will have to abstain my vote on this ordinance due to my employment being with a company that owns and operates two of the charitable gaming facilities inside of the city. I'm also under the advisement not to partake in the consideration or discussion of this measure, so I'm pleased to request a roll call vote when the time comes.
Thank you, Alderman Govea. Alderman Tebow?
Thank you, Madam President, I'm definitely for this, but I was curious, the woman that had brought up the, you know, not letting anybody in after a certain time with this, I'd be curious what the man that spoke from Boston Billiards thought about that, if that's something we can ask them, I was just curious what they, what their stance is on letting other people in.
Well, Alderman Clemmons has his hand raised, he might have an answer for you.
Okay, yeah, that works too.
Did you have an answer for him, Alderman Clemmons?
I, I don't have a particular answer to that specifically, I have a comment about it, though.
All right, did you want to ask?
Yeah, if, if, I just curious their viewpoint of it.
We have two people here tonight that own establishments in the city.
Yeah, I would like to hear from both of them, that would be great. Thank you.
Once again, Kurt Mathias, Boston Billiard Club, we have adequate security staff, and we also employ, not employ, but have Nashville Police Details on to cover us until closing time, so we believe we have the security, and if we didn't, we, obviously, I sometimes agree with, with President Wiltshire that nothing good happens after 1:00 AM, but, you know, we believe with our security staff, we can handle it, and if we didn't, we would voluntarily go back to 1:00 in the morning immediately. We don't want trouble any more than the city wants trouble, we don't want police officers hurt, our people hurt, we would, we would go back. And in talking with, with the new Police Commissioner, he's on board with it as long as there are no issues either. I don't know if that answers your question?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Jim, did you want to weigh in? Mr. Rafferty, sorry.
Jim Rafferty, owner and operator of the Rivers, River Casino downtown, and the Lucky Moves up on Exit 6. We believe that this is just a natural outgrowth of the parties that we have, we throw to at night downtown, and we are totally, as Mr. Mathias said, confident that we can control the facility, and this would be win-win-win, win for the customers, win for the charities, win for the operators, win for downtown enjoyment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a follow-up comment, please?
Yes.
Thank you. I, thank you, I, that's, both those comments are exactly what I wanted to hear, and I wanted people to hear in this meeting, so that's perfect, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Alderman Clemmons?
Thank you, to follow up on, on, on that, that is precisely the reason I brought this forward the way that I did. So in the past, I, this has come before this forward in different iterations, twice before, to basically extended to the entire city, anybody that had a liquor license. And the concerns that were raised, you know, I took to heart, and so I thought about what facilities in Nashua want this the most, would benefit from the most, but could also handle it. All of the casinos have built-in security, it's part of their apparatus, so, and I think they answered it perfectly, they're going to be able to, to patrol this very well, they already have the apparatus to do so. Furthermore, the, I think this will, from a business perspective, this will set Nashua apart for those gaming facilities, and so folks that may decide between Manchester and Nashua, or Nashua and maybe going to a casino in, in Boston, might, might stay, choose to stay here instead, so I think we're, we're putting our casinos at a competitive advantage, and I think that they have the, the staff to handle, to handle this change.
Further discussion? Alderman Cathy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Being a person who does not like a lot of regulation, and I appreciate the two gentlemen's answers, but could we, or should we even codify that particular, very, very specific rule into law when there could be extenuating circumstances? I don't, I don't even know, like, I'm not familiar with, with the industry, so I could be way off, but I feel like it's worth having the discussion, being that it is an additional regulation on top of the, asking them to only let people that are already in the building.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yeah, I, I wouldn't put that in the, in the ordinance, I, I, I think it, in the motion that I have is to just leave it as is. Reason I wouldn't put that in the ordinance is because I think that the businesses can handle that, I think they're responsible, and as they said, if, if it becomes a problem for them, they'll voluntarily go back to 1:00 AM, so I have no, no issue with, I don't think we need to add stipulations.
Alderman Camo?
Thank you, Madam President, if I could just add on to what Alderman Clemmons, Alderman Clemmons was just saying, as someone who spends a good deal of time losing money in these casinos, seen firsthand the very well-run security staffs that all three establishments have, and I have no doubts that they'll be able to handle, you know, the, whatever increase may come, which is debatable that there might even be an increase, and it's already against a lot of serve intoxicated people, and the bartenders are pretty good at identifying them, and, so I, I don't really feel like it's going to be that big of a concern, so I support the legislation as it's written.
Alderman Tebow?
Yeah, just a comment, and just to clarify, I'm, I'm for this, I just wanted to make sure that, we had, you know, one person on Zoom and one person in the room that asked that question, so, I just wanted to make sure that we, I guess clarified it for the public that we do feel comfortable that these establishments can handle that, and I believe they can, they, Mr. Rafferty had spoke last time about it as well, and I believe the police are all on board with it too, so I'm 100% for it, thank you.
Further discussion? Alderman Dowd?
Yeah, I too, I'm very comfortable with their security, and I know they can handle it, so I, no issues with the legislation as it's currently written.
Further discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan?
Yes.
Alderman Moran?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Camo?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Govea?
I'm staying.
Alderman Cathy?
Yes.
Alderman Tebow?
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons?
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes.
You have 13 ayes and one abstention.
That motion carries, and ordinance 22 dash 007 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of ordinance 22009, raising the landfill disposal fee for construction and demolition debris from $90 per ton to $300 per ton.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'd like to move for final passage of O 22009, and if I could speak to it, please.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Uh, thank you, just a quick update from the committee, I know if you're looking at this and you have, do have no background, you're like, wow, we're, we're changing this quite a bit, but this is really a deterrent, we have a lot of people bringing in debris that are not from Nashua and filling our landfill, so this is really to help us preserve our landfill. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Alderman Lopez?
I'd just like to add that I agree with Alderman Kelly's assessment, it was presented to us, and at first I was like, why are we raising the fee, why are we, how much money are we possibly going to make on this, on the landfill? Except that it is not about making more money, we are losing money because a number of contractors that do business in multiple cities are using our landfill because it's essentially a loophole, and they can dump construction waste in that the city then either has to remove or occupy space in our landfill, and we have a limited amount of landfill. I think it's bad enough that we have to have a landfill, like Nashville property has to be used for that purpose, but the least we can do is maintain it responsibly, make sure that it does the least ecological harm, and that the space inside it is reserved, is reserved as an amenity for people in Nashua, and I hope that this will be a good step towards ensuring that.
Alderman Sullivan, did you have your hand up?
Yes, I was going to say, we took a trip to the landfill before we were sworn in, and we talked about this specific issue, that landfill staff was literally walking out into the landfill to rip open bags to check the billing address of, of the people that just dumped, and then they made another comment about if they dumped shingles, they would ask them the question about where they were ripping the shingles off, and, and again, landfill personnel would drive to the home to verify that. There are, and my numbers might be off here, there are four phases of the landfill, and we're two and a half in, this is one of the state's last municipal landfills, so I think this is a really good idea to try to, as opposed to make money, save space.
Alderman Cathy?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I just wanted to echo Alderwoman Kelly's comments and Alderman Sullivan's comments, we did go to the landfill, and this is a win for the city, makes our landfill employees much more efficient and effective, and they can concentrate on the work that they're doing while keeping our landfill around for a really long time, so I'm glad that this happened.
Alderman Govea?
Thank you, Madam President, I am for this ordinance as well, solely because it's preserving the landfill, which is really one of the, a very large asset for our city, and any way we can make that stay around longer and benefit the residents of Nashua, I'm all for it. Thank you.
Alderman Tebow?
Yeah, I just wanted to echo some of that, and also, you know, I mentioned it when we had the committee meeting, that, you know, I saw somewhere that, you know, this was the mayor's way of making a ton of money, and we've all said it today, that it's a deterrent, it's to stop people from, from dumping the stuff there. Alderman Govea brought up a great point in, in the committee, saying, well, why don't we just stop doing it, and that's not the, you know, we, me and him talked about it afterward, it's not the Alderman's purview, right, that would be DPW, but we can start by raising the money to try to get the deterrent, and if they decide that they want to go that route in the future, we can go that route, so it's not about making money, it's about keep, because I'd, I'd support, same thing with Alderman, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but we would support, you know, if the DPW decided to just get rid of it altogether, so, I just want to make sure that it's clear that it's a deterrent, you know, the mayor's not lining his pockets on this one. Or anything else.
With the construction.
Alderman Sullivan?
And to make clear, so this is a question, this is not raising the residential dump pass, correct?
Correct.
Okay, that's still going to remain at $5.
Correct.
Best bargain in town.
Alderwoman Kelly?
I did clarify whether the, the residential demolition debris would be the same cost than it would, but the conversation around, I think you were there, but I just wanted to put it on record, they were, you know, someone who is a resident is only bringing so much in, and it's, it's not going to be a significant change for them, but it would be the same.
Thank you.
Motion is for final passage of ordinance 22 dash 009, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and ordinance 22009 is declared duly adopted. New business resolutions?
First reading of Resolution R 2218, authorizing Penichuck Corporation and Penichuck East Utility, Inc., to borrow funds and accept a grant from the State of New Hampshire Drinking Water and Groundwater Trust Fund.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien? Alderman Lopez? Alderman Moran? Alderman Dowd? Alderman Tebow? Alderman Timmons? And myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Penichuck Order Special Committee.
First reading of Resolution R 2219, authorizing Penichuck Corporation and Penichuck East Utility, Inc., to enter into a term loan with CoBank ACB.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien? Alderman Moran? Alderman Dowd? Alderman Tebow? Alderman Timmons? Alderwoman Timmons? And myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Penichuck Special Water Committee.
First reading of Resolution R 2220, authorizing the mayor and the city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed the amount of $37,500,000 to fund the second five-year phase of a 10-year pavement management project.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Sullivan? Alderman Moran? Alderman Lopez? Alderwoman Kelly? Alderman Tebow? Alderwoman Timmons? Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee, Board of Public Works, and schedule a special Board of Aldermen public hearing on Monday, April 25th, 2022, at 7:00 PM, in the Aldemantic Chamber.
First reading of Resolution R 2221, changing the purpose of up to $152,030 of unexpended bond proceeds from the Fire Department pumper truck and aerial ladder truck purchases to infrastructure improvements to the municipal fire alarm system.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien? Alderman Clemmons? Alderman Camo? Alderman Dowd? Alderman Tebow? And myself. Given its first reading, I will assign that to the Budget Review Committee, the Board of Fire Commissioners, and schedule a special Board of Aldermen public hearing on Monday, April 25th, 2022, at 7:00 PM, here in the Aldemantic Chamber. New business ordinances?
There is none.
Period for public comment? I have no one in the chamber signed up. Okay. Lori Ordolano?
Lori Ordolano, 41 Berkeley Street. And what's really interesting is the name is now Lori Ordolano, and I did not do that. So I guess your request was magically filled out. Filled in. So I want to talk about our email storage and retention policy, and I want to talk about anything the Aldermen can do to assist me in this policy we have going on in the city regarding emails. There's been a number of lawsuits filed over email records, and for the most part, citizens have done well winning those lawsuits on records. One thing that has occurred over the last year is that each time records were being requested for emails, the city was providing us with a written policy, a 45-day email storage and retention policy that was updated by the mayor on the May 3rd of 2021. But it turns out that policy was not what was being used by the city. The city had changed their storage and retention policy to 90 days in March of 2020, and then in the summer of 2020, changed it to 120 days, four months, but never disclosed to the public that that change was made. And while I was submitting right-to-knows to understand what the retention policy was because I felt it wasn't being handled right, the city just kept unloading a 45-day policy on me. After going through a series of trials in court and through questioning Nick Meiservich, I learned that that was not the policy, that it was not, that was not what was being used. He testified that Ms. Kleiner had authorized a change to 120 days. And so when Laura Calhoun asked for emails between Rick Vincent and Ms. Kleiner in 2021, January and February, the city initially would not provide any records, and then came back and said, we can't guarantee we can give you two months of records because we had a 45-day retention policy. In fact, it was 120 days, and there was no issue on providing the records. The same thing happened to me with these AssessHelp emails that I am in court on, back in court on Thursday. Turns out on those emails, it was a 60-day policy, unwritten. So I can't file a right-to-know to get what the policy is because it's not in writing. The city refused to tell me what it was because it wasn't in writing, and they would only give me a defunct, non-working 45-day policy that wasn't used, and then stood behind it to deny me records. Now, I know I'm going to win this lawsuit, but I am so frustrated by the lying done by this city, and in particular, what Ms. Kleiner is doing. It is beyond distressing what I have gone through. We should not be representing people in this city with our legal counsel who are lying to the citizens and lying to the courts. It's coming out. I'm confident I can get it out. I'm going to have to file a few more lawsuits, but I am so tired of this, and I am adamant that we should not keep people like this in City Hall.
Anyone else on Zoom? Need to put your hand up if you want to be recognized.
It is. My hand's up.
Okay, Beth Skare?
Yeah, hi, Beth Skare, 111 East Hobart Street. I'm following up. Alderman Moran made some comments at an Aldermanic Committee meeting where he celebrated the defeat of House Bill 1077, which would have repealed the conversion therapy ban. And I just wanted to let him know and let everyone in the city know, the therapy ban funnels kids who are gender confused into affirmation-only therapy that gives them no options for treatments except hormone blockers, cross-sex hormones, and having healthy body parts removed to make their bodies into a facsimile of the opposite sex. I'm grateful that the Nashville Library has purchased the book Irreversible Damage: The Transgender Craze Seducing Our Daughters, which you can see behind me. And I recommend this book to any parents or young people who are dealing with gender confusion or tempted to go down this path, because it leads to permanent physical changes and serious harm to their health. And my hope is that Alderman Moran and our other elected officials would read this book also and educate themselves about what's really going on and not just celebrate sending these kids down this one-way path to physical damage, to irreversible damage. Our young people deserve better. Thank you.
Stephen Skare? You're on mute, Mr. Skare.
Stephen Skare, 111 East Hobart Street. I also was concerned about Mel Moran's celebration of the conversion and the therapy ban not being repealed. When you think about conversion therapy, you think about electric shocks, or people being snapped, or people being forced to do something. But this repeals talk therapy, and not only for regular... Not only for what they say gay conversion, but also for people that are struggling with gender identity being able to explore that. The consensus at the hearing for this bill was that it only allows for affirmative therapy, and if anyone works with, a therapist works with a young person to explore the questions, to make sure that there wasn't another problem at the root of the gender confusion, that therapists risk breaking the law and losing a license. And what's happening all over is that thousands of young people, especially gender-confused girls, are... They're way too young to give informed consent, and they're getting pushed down the path of hormone blockers, wrong-sex hormones, and surgery. I'd encourage people to go to the Detransitioners subreddit page, and I know people say, well, it's subreddit, I'm going to get my information from that. That's the only place where it's safe for the detransitioners to talk, that they've been driven off of all sorts of forums, and they can talk about what it's like trying to live with lifetimes of regret and irreversibly mutilated bodies. So the conversion ban repeal defeat isn't something to be particularly proud of. Thank you.
Seeing no one else, we'll move on. Remarks by members of the board? I'll start over here this tonight. Alderman Moran.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I would just like to reaffirm that I am very proud that House Bill 1077 was defeated. That is a continuous attack on LGBTQ+ children to try to change them to be straight. I think it's very inappropriate for the House to continue to push that bill. Affirmation therapy is not... I'm, I guess, confused on that because I think if anyone came to my office for a mental health treatment and they were confused, we'd talk through that confusion and not convince them one way or another. Affirmation therapy is saying, yes, 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 you're right, you're right. That is not what happens in general talk therapy and psychotherapy. But I am certainly opposed to anyone who would want to see a gay person or a bisexual person and say, no, that's wrong. You're 14 years old, you don't know what that is. It's almost the equivalent of having a straight person come in and saying, no, that's completely inappropriate, you should be gay. People can be, have free thought, and I think we shouldn't support that. Other than that, I would just like to remind everyone that this 27th run and walk for the Nashville Soup Kitchen and Shelter will be held on, for food and shelter, will be held on April 3rd. I will be participating, but I will be walking with the team. I won't be running, and I hope many others can join us. Thank you.
Alderman Lopez.
I will also be participating in the walk-run. I will attempt to be running, but I believe former Alderman Moriarty is going to beat all of us, so don't hold your hopes up. I just wanted to comment. First, I'd like to apologize to the board for being tardy. I had a resident who was playing 52 pickup with her groceries, and I didn't notice that when I was trying to help, I was kneeling in the tomato sauce, so I had to go do a little bit of rapid conversion, I guess. So I thought about saying, logging in on the Zoom, and then I remembered President Willschirr did not like that, and everyone in this chamber would have had to do a roll call vote for everything, so it took me a little bit of extra time, but I'm glad to be here with you guys. And then finally, I was approached by a member of the press over the weekend, was looking to make some... And I believe he was looking because he essentially opened with questions leading me towards a certain opinion. He was looking to have my support to criticize one of our elected officials, representative, our state representative for Ward 4, and I found that distasteful. I think members of the press should be asking questions to learn people's input, understand people's opinions, and they should do that for fact-finding purposes. I don't think that a long and leading attempt to attack somebody's character is necessarily appropriate, so I was not interested in engaging in that. And I would like to reinforce that I am appreciative of all of our Ward 4 state representatives. They're only paid $100 to represent our ward, $100 a year to represent our ward. It's a very difficult time in the State House. There are a lot of very important issues being tackled, and they have to tackle it in a lot of different ways. The individual in question has a number of health issues, so it is, having just come through a pandemic, it was extremely dangerous for him to go to a room with 400 other people where alternative accommodations were not allowed by the speaker and were intentionally not allowed. So I understand that individuals' difficulties as a person who has, who's differently abled himself, I understand what it is to overcome barriers, to try to do your job in different ways, and I appreciate all of our representatives. Thank you.
Alderman Jettie.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to also congratulate the Gleason family on the opening of the Rambling House and the Tail Spinner Brewery. The Gleisons are a fine Ward 5 family, and, you know, my wife and I sampled their products this past week, and the food, the food was excellent, as was the beverage, and I congratulate them. On another note, April 15th is coming, which is, I don't know if it's the 15th or the 16th this year. It's not only the time to file your tax returns, but for anyone who thinks that they might be eligible for the exemptions that the city provides for property tax, either the elderly exemption, the veterans exemption, or the disabled exemption, you know, those applications are due by April 15th. And so if you think you might be eligible, check with the city website, there's an excellent explanation there, and the assessor's office is very helpful in guiding people through it as to what information they need to show whether or not they qualify. But don't let that April 15th date go by, because if you don't file the application by then, you're out of luck, at least until next year. So, thank you.
Thank you. Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you. I have two pieces of information I wanted to share with everyone. The Energy and Environment Committee is putting together a sustainable town hall in Earth Day would be when we would normally hold it, but this year, we're going to be doing it on April 12th at the Nashville Public Library, 5:30, it's right before our Aldermanic meeting, so if you can come and join in, it's going to be an update from our energy manager, Doria Brown, and also, we're going to do a community brainstorm around some more ways that we can continue to push our sustainability here in the city. And I'm also happy to report that the Nashville Pride Committee met, was it last week, the Days Alblair. And we are going to be doing the pride parade in person again this year, barring any additional changes that come at us, and that will be the last Saturday in September... I'm sorry, last Saturday in June, as it always has historically been the last few years that we've had it, so that's June 29th, and the time is TBD right now, but I'll give you guys more updates as we do it.
Alderman Kamo.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to share a brief piece of good news. Several months ago, in my ward, we lost the institution of Kinsley House of Pizza. And speaking with a couple of the owners, they are hoping to reopen at some point this summer, so hopefully that is on track, and I wish them best of luck getting the building back up to code so they can open up at some point during the summer. It would be great to see them back.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, continuing with some good news, we have started, commenced the work on the new middle school down in South End. It actually came above quicker than we thought. The... We're having to do a little change in the approach. We are going to be accessing the property from the emergency access road at the corner of Cherrywood and Medallion instead of from Buck Meadow, because we're, this Friday, we hope to get the dredge and fill permit so we can start working on the main access road off of Buck Meadow. But until that's completed, we'll be entering the property through the emergency access road. And currently, we have an even more temporary road off of that same intersection to allow the trucks to bring the heavy equipment onto the property so they can start clearing trees, working their way over and digging the foundations. So it's a, it is a construction site, and it will be closed until the school opens. So we prefer not to have anyone trying to see what's being done because the equipment up there is pretty intense. Work will be from 7:00 in the morning till 5:00 at night. Also, this summer, the Penachuck School site will again be closed because of the extensive work that's going to be done, and access to the fields and in the back and the track and all of that will be accessed through, over the Henry Burke like it was last summer. So those are all for safety reasons, and we're moving very quickly on the middle school project, and we are trying to move ahead so that we can get the schedule, keep the schedule, and not incur any additional cost with what's going on in the world. So, thanks.
Alderman Cathy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Some of my thoughts might have been better suited for general discussion, but because they're more like questions. Alderman Cle mentioned the spending cap, and I know that has something to do with accepting grants, and sometimes we have resolutions that have grants in them, and so I didn't know if we would soon be learning information more about the spending cap and how it affects Nashua, and how it affects these resolutions and ordinances. I know there was discussion about that, but I'd rather have that sooner rather than later because when I'm looking over ordinances and resolutions that involve grants, it's sort of confusing to say, yeah, I want to support this, but would it really matter if the spending cap is going to cause problems? Wouldn't that be the problem we would have to address first before we move forward? And then, another question, is there any way that we have, we can have a home screen? Because it is super distracting to look at members of the public on a giant screen when they're done talking. No offense to them, but it's just...
I miss care.
After they're done, it's a little like, I feel like they're still talking, so... And then, I did want to mention something on the back of the Kinsley. The owner of Chicken &amp; Chips apparently owns Uncle Joey's Pizza in Merrimack, and I talked to them, and they are looking to reopen and rebuild Chicken &amp; Chips. I don't know when that would be, but I was really pleased to hear that they aren't going anywhere because I really like that establishment. And then, the final thing I'll say is, one of the members of the public mentioned about the bonding schedule. I believe we talked about that last night, where CEO Griffin is, or not CEO, CFO Griffin is going to give us a presentation about the bonding schedules and how they work into the future, and so that information will be coming to us momentarily, so I just wanted to make that clear. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm sorry, I always got a lot to say. First thing, I just want to wish Alderman Cle the best, and hopefully she feels better soon and can rejoin us as soon as possible. I also want to champion Alderman Moran. You know, the term conversion, the word convert is in the word, and I think it was you and everyone else up there that voted the same way. Thank you for that. I appreciate that. I want to thank the mayor for bringing up all the companies coming to Nashville, I think. I'm always looking at empty spaces going, what's going in there? You know, I hate that. I want more revenue into the city, and that's great that we have those three companies. Speaking of the library, you know, the fact that they have that book in there shows that the library can, is not biased, and that they can have, you know, books on communism or Hitler's books, and also have books that go against that. And that's exactly, and I'm not comparing that, but I'm just saying, they can have alternative positions, whether we agree with those positions or not. This past week, I went to the library, they had their annual or their spring book sale. They made over $18,000 for the library, so with COVID, the last couple... They made over $18,000 for the library, so with COVID the last couple of years, I know it's been tough for them, and I just wanted to thank and appreciate the work that Director McCormick's doing over at the library. It was a really good sale. They got $6.50 out of me and my kids, so thank you for that. I think that's, it was packed, so it's good money going to the library. And the last thing, the senior center, so I saw that the mayor was there, I think it was today, boxing up some Meals on Wheels or helping prepare some Meals on Wheels. I actually visited there last Friday and met with some of the board, Mr. Fredette, former treasurer Fredette, Margot Bell, June Karen, and former Alderman June Karen. And I think it's a great facility. I did find out that, you know, as a 50-year-old, I'm allowed to join. It starts at 50, so, you know, I might take them up on that. They got a nice little gym in there, a nice little library. I think it's a, you know, it's not run by the city. We do support them in certain ways, and I think they do a great job. And again, with COVID, things kind of went down a little bit, but it's a beautiful facility as far as cleanliness. They got about 800 members, so I just wanted to promote that and build them up again because I think they do a lot of good things for the city and seniors. Thank you.
Alderman Timmons? Okay. Committee announcements. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. As liaison to the BPW, just to remind you, tomorrow at 2:00 in the afternoon will be a groundbreaking ceremony at the landfill. Everybody's welcome. If you want to come, you get to see the mayor throw a couple of shovels, you know. And I think Alderman Dowd's bringing the cupcakes, I don't know. But you're all welcome to that. And with the co-chair, just to remind, on Wednesday will be the task force meeting, which is tomorrow night, on the downtown areas, so you're all welcome to attend that as well. Thank you. And that's at 7:00 PM.
Other committee announcements? Alderman, Alderwoman Kelly?
I almost never do this because it's always so far away, but we do have personnel, it sounds like will be busy, thanks to the new appointments by the mayor on April 4th, Monday, before our next board meeting.
Thank you. Alderman Dowd.
Yes, this Thursday, 7:00, there'll be the Joint Special School Building Committee at Nashville High North. I also forgot to mention that I did a letter to all the neighbors of the new, around the new school, around Cherrywood and Medallion, and hand-delivered it to all of them so that Alderman Sullivan and I wouldn't be getting any unnecessary phone calls. So, no phone calls so far, so it looks like it gave them news. Thanks.
Alderman Timmons.
Yes, tomorrow, the cultural connection meets, 9:00 at 9:00, but at 12:00, they changed the time for just tomorrow until we decide exactly when we're going to have the time. So it was voted to have it tomorrow afternoon at 12:00 via Zoom.
Okay, thank you.
Madam President.
Alderman Jettie.
Yeah, I, I hate to ever correct Alderman Dowd, but I want to point out to him that the new middle school is no longer in Ward 9, Alderman Sullivan's Ward, but is now in Ward 5, my ward. So.
I will forward all those calls.
Lucky you.
He was, he was concerned about the phone calls, that's why.
Again, neighbor is resident.
Can I call you out in that neighborhood?
Alderman Jettie.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion that the March 22nd, 2022, meeting of the Board of Aldermen be adjourned.
Motion is to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. We are adjourned at 8:43 PM. Thank you, everyone.